Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the October 28th meeting of the Lorain County Board of Commissioners. I'm gonna read out a Psalms today, it's 100 verses 1 through 5. Shout with joy to the Lord all the earth, worship the Lord with gladness, come before him singing with joy, acknowledge that the Lord is God. He made us and we are his, we are his people, the sheep of his pasture. Enter his gates with thanksgiving, go into his courts with praise, give thanks to him and praise his name, for the Lord is good. And today, the dog warden is going to do the dog from the kennel this morning.
Good morning, we have a brindle terrier mix in cage number one, female, about a year old. Right now, we're sitting on 27 dogs there, so if this isn't your cup of tea, come on out and see us. Thank you very much.
She's a really playful dog, great temperament.
Beautiful dog. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Preparations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within Juris or some other county commissioners.
Mr. Cordoz?
Thank you, Madam President. I do require a brief executive session. I want to discuss the potential purchase and sale of real estate, ongoing, or actually beginning to commence, labor negotiations, and possible hires at the collection center. All three topics will live under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions, so I ask at the conclusion of our meeting today, we go into executive session, talk about those issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approving the reading in the minutes of October 21st?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Community Development, award various contracts to Burnout Septic Service, Inc., Lucreange, for various homeowners to receive grant assistance from CHIP program year 14, home repair activity for the septic system replacement, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders. Thirteen thousand seventy-nine dollars and seventy-three cents for Kenneth and Louis Gancevik at 42779 Haven Drive, Alariah, and thirteen thousand thirty-seven dollars thirty-four cents for Diana Macbeth at 4168 Overland Larry Road, Carlisle.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Award contract modern roofing and home improvements, Seven Hills, in the amount of four thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars, for James Johnson, 920 Kimberly Circle Overland, to receive grant assistance from CHIP program year 14, home repair for roof replacement, gutters and downspouts, and fascia work.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, actually, Don, Seven Hills. I know things are busy out there, guys, but Seven Hills for a forty-nine-hundred-dollar order?
Unfortunately, was the lowest and best bid, and we've been struggling just to get people to turn in bids.
I know we have, that's why I brought up, I just, when I saw Seven Hills on the thing, I said I would talk about it, just trying to get contractors. Please, local guys, we need you to bid our county work.
We do have an event coming up, November 18th, at the Transportation Center with the BIA and the Chamber of Commerce, along with us, to actually open up for contractors, anyone who has any interest, any questions, any desire to learn how to get at more than, I think we still have more than eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in contracts to let residential rehab.
If we can put something together, have Hal put that on the screen for those who might, they might know somebody who's a contractor. We contact them. We call them, text them, email them, I mean, they're making personal contact, they're just not really desirous of those smaller jobs. You know, one of the things I want to do is I want to, I want to see us do a little bit different of how we get the person out there to review the work, that's been a bit of an issue. Don and I've talked about it, and right now, we got a kind of a narrow window, right?
We do, on the larger projects that we're about to go into, we have several out to bid right now.
So I want to try to open the window a little larger for the timeframes for vendors to come in and take a look at the work. They're doing the best they can upstairs, I'm not being critical. No, not at all, I'm not being critical of our staff, I just, I know we've had a hard time, and I just wanted to bring to attention, there's a company from Seven Hills getting five thousand dollars worth of Lorain County money. There's many contractors as there are out there, please reach out to us, we want you guys to bid the work.
And actually, the event is on our Facebook page, as well as the Board of Commissioners' Facebook page, that just went up this morning.
Did it, okay, 'cause I haven't seen it, so I'll share it later today.
Yes, thank you.
Do we actually talk with the cities about approved contractors in their respective cities and try to mail them? That's part of our working place?
We've reached out to them, we do that every couple of years, who's been licensed, registered with cities, and we do a reach out there, as well as advertising in the paper, and...
Yeah, 'cause that's part of the data, that if we can pull that data in and regularly be in contact with those individuals, but, you know, I agree with my colleagues, and, you know, we talk about it around here all the time, about the importance of money being vested back into the county, but, you know, for the residents watching, you have to understand, there's, you know, we have to follow the law, we can't always just simply say because somebody's a local contractor, depends on how these bids come in, but...
It's not like you old days, where we had 3%.
Right, so it's, you know, it's a little frustrating when you can't give the work to a local contractor, but I think in a lot of cases, it's, you know, letting them know about it, and I know that you've been doing a tremendous job reaching out to them, and then when you told me about this workshop that's coming up, I thought, that's great, we were kinda on the same page, I was thinking about that, but I should've known you'd be out front on it, already getting it done, so, but anything we can do to get more people to the table, so I would just suggest if we haven't had those conversations recently with the cities, find out who's approved by the respective building departments, that we try to get that list and reach those people, too.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Don.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Transit Authorized filing of application with ODAD for fiscal year 16 Ohio Transit Preservation Partnership Program.
So moved.
Second.
Jim, yeah, hang on a second, Jim, you want to talk about this, I saw Red Pam's emails back and forth on the transit preservation and applying for the dollars. Are we looking at some vehicle replacement for next year? I know Commissioner Lundie has been working heavily on putting together the citizens group and the push. I'm gonna try to get six replacement vehicles and get cute. The issue, though, is local match, the vehicles are not 100%. Fortunately, if you remember, several years ago, when stimulus money was flowing freely, even though transit was on decline in Lorain County, reached out, got enough money for 10 new buses, and I mothballed those 10 buses inside a warehouse, and then we fought with the FTA over a number of years, because they wanted us to release them to other transit systems, and we told them, "Come and cut the lock," that's the only way they were getting them. So we've been rolling them in the stock over the last couple of years, and that's really proved beneficial to us, but we now need to look at a replacement schedule. But we have to come up with 20% of the money. So my thinking is to ask for highway credits again, out of Columbus, but I'm still trying to straighten out this stuff with the train station. I don't like to make a little ask, you know, you ask for 25,000, they give it to you, then when you ask for the 100,000, they say, "We just gave you 25," or they ask for 25,000. And, but I'm finding that, you know, straightening out the stuff with the train station is gonna take a little longer, so I have to figure out a strategy for this, because we do not have the 20% local match for the buses. Correct, I spent some time at least, I started working on numbers for next year's budget, and I saw the match, I mean, we're getting the CMAC, we're planning for CMAC dollars. Correct. But again, we've got that other side to deal with, I just didn't have a plan, because I hadn't met with you this week. Well, you know, we'll figure it out, it, we gotta have rolling stock, and I'm hoping that with the work that this committee's doing, and some of the renewed effort from the leadership, and Commissioner Lundie is spearheading that, that we see a revenue initiative next year that'll be palatable to support transit. Okay, just was a question when I saw, 'cause I needed a local doc, and we need the local match, and what the plan of action was, or what you had discussed with Pam, that I changed her, so... Well, if we don't do something next year, remember, it's been three years, it's been two years now, actually, it was three elections ago that we made the last ask, so we, you know, it's been a while, and I think the community is, their thinking's changing a little bit, there's been a little bit of improvement across the county, and I think our chances are a little bit better this time for support. I don't know how Commissioner Lundie feels about that, but we're still struggling.
Well, we haven't talked much about it, but it's important for the public to know, there's been ongoing discussions, but I want to stress, it's a grassroots group that is meeting on a regular basis, I'm kind of the board's representative to this grassroots group, and those meetings, I think, have been very, very productive. Currently, you know, Bill Harper with United Way, Brian Frederick with Community Foundation, members of the League of Women Voters, transportation advocates throughout the county, been meeting pretty much every other week, and what is underway right now is the, the group is forming a 501(c)(4), so they can advocate for transportation, so they can also raise money for a feasibility study. The thinking is that the budget is going to be, at least to start, around $20,000, $15,000 will be for a feasibility study, another five will be for setting up the 501(c)(4). The group is currently doing some outreach, reaching out to businesses, reaching out to organizations, to see if they're interested in making a $1,000 investment apiece, so that that feasibility study, and so that the legal structure can be put in place. And the feasibility study will probably be conducted starting mid to late November, with results expected to come back by March, so at that point, we'll have an idea as to what the pulse of the county is for supporting public transit, and also, there will clearly be a structure in place for this 501(c)(4), so, so while you haven't read about it in the paper, and there hasn't been any big public meetings of late, which I want to stress, we're well-attended earlier in the year when we held those meetings, the plan is to do some community meetings during that feasibility study phase, so that not only are we polling people by phone, but we're also polling people in person through focus groups, if you will. So I think things have been going very well, it's just the group right now is not quite at a stage where we can give much of an update other than that. So right now, the process is to have companies, organizations invest the money, the hope is to raise 20,000, 15 for a feasibility study, another 5,000 to be used for setting up the legal structure and the books properly for a 501(c)(4).
Thank you.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under workforce, under agreement with ACT, purchase work keys and ACT National Career Readiness Tools in the amount not to exceed 39,000, to develop and launch a local ACT Work Ready Community Program.
Mike Longo, our director over at Workforce is here, he has a small presentation for us. Good morning.
Commissioner, I asked Mr. Longo to come here to have a chat with you, because this is really an important change for us, we've been talking about it for a couple months, and it's really gonna start the transformation of the way we evaluate the community, and trying to get businesses to understand how we're evaluating the skillsets and the readiness of the workforce. And I just felt that, A, you needed to have a little bit more information, and also, B, to use this as a forum to try to get information out into the, into the community.
So I'm holding a microphone, I'm gonna be pressing buttons, so I chose not to chew gum, 'cause I wouldn't be able to present.
Can you do all of them at the same time?
This is gonna be challenging.
We should assess your skills.
Yes, thank you for having me this morning, so, this is ACT Work Ready Community, and ACT being the same agency that provides the college readiness exams for students who are making the transition from high school to college. And I want to give you a little bit of a background today about ACT Work Ready Communities and some of the tools and products that come with it, because this is not necessarily something that's new, but it's something that, as Jim mentions, can be extremely valuable to how we evaluate job seekers and work with employers in our community. So ACT provides an assessment tool called Work Keys, and Work Keys is a nationally-known instrument where it's a literacy assessment that helps to establish how somebody will perform skills in the workplace compared to showing a literacy level, and a lot of times, our assessments show a literacy level that employers and individuals that aren't involved in education really can't assess the outcomes and know what that person's skills truly are. And there's three assessments that we would be utilizing primarily with Work Keys, which include applied mathematics, locating information, and reading for information. These assessment tools also come with an interactive training system that allows for individuals who take the assessment, who may not score at levels that are necessary for specific employment opportunities they might be interested for applying for, to self-direct themselves into an online system that will allow them to focus on improving their skills, but there's also a curriculum that comes with this system that allows for classroom training. And I know we have a contract that the board approved with the Lorain County Community College Able Program in the past, where we are providing literacy enhancement courses for individuals who do have high school diplomas or degrees, and what we would be looking at is through that contract, having the able provider begin teaching this curriculum to help the individuals improve their skills. And then ultimately, there are certificates that are issued, and many employers around the nation are already familiar with these certificates, they are a nationally-recognized credential, and many of our performance expectations through the workforce system, we're required to have individuals obtain credentials, and this is actually one of the credentials that's recognized, so there's value to issuing the credential, because it helps us meet measures. And there's these four different levels that are part of the certificates that individuals receive, and as you take this assessment, if, for example, you score a Level 6 in all the different categories of those three assessments, you would receive what's known as a platinum certificate, and then the employer has a really good understanding of what that means, it will show them how somebody could perform math at that level, or how somebody could locate information for that level. And when we talk about those different tools, I mean, math obviously is gonna be more like work problems, that would be geared towards things that happen in the workplace, might be using tools to measure things, or instruments to measure things, might be doing math, a math problem that shows how somebody could create calculations or formulas in an Excel spreadsheet, so again, an employer really understands how somebody would perform these skills as it relates to that. So the Work Ready Communities, this is actually an initiative that ACT started a couple years back, and what they're doing is they're encouraging states or local municipalities to pursue becoming a Work Ready Community, and there are common criteria that are being established, so that everybody can be measured fairly in a sense of if they're meeting this common criteria. And the intention is, is to focus on, in on three specific areas, the current workforce, so working with employers that might begin to use these instruments to evaluate their existing workforce, and to understand how they might be able to work with their incumbent workforce to use these tools to help them excel. The transitioning workforce, which would be most of the individuals that are coming through the public workforce system, so those folks that come through the Ohio Means Job System, those are individuals that we would be working with to meet this common criteria. And then the emerging workforce, which is looking at beginning to use this instrument in the school systems, or with our GED providers in the community. We, through the Lorain County Growth Partnership, have all evaluated this instrument, and we actually have the buy-in from the JVS, from the Community College, that they also will be working to help us achieve these measures once they're established. And with these measures, there are, based upon the size of your community, there are formulas that ACT uses to come up with the measurements, and then they're very transparent about the areas that have become, or are working towards becoming an ACT Work Ready Community, and they have a website, and I'm showing a picture here of the map of the United States, that the areas highlighted in blue are states where either the state as a whole has already began working towards becoming a certified state, or communities and counties within those states have started this process. And this document that's on their website also shows the total number of certified counties, that's towards the lower right portion of the screen here, and being that this started two years ago, you have to establish these measures, meet the measures, before you actually become certified. So right now, in Ohio, there's two counties that have been working towards becoming an ACT Work Ready Community, and Lucas County being one of them, the other being Preble County. But I took a screen print, so you can kind of get a sense of, once we begin this process, what will be measured on, and how the screens show what we're doing towards meeting these established criteria. And this shows that Lucas County, when you look at their goals of the emerging and the current and the transitioning workforce, on the right-hand side of the page, the percentage they're at towards meeting those goals. And once you get to the point where you satisfy what ACT is looking for, because ACT also provides much guidance in helping your community move towards this certification, so they're providing some workforce academies, where you go, you learn their best practices, you learn what other communities around the nation are doing, and once you get to that 100%, again, that's when certification happens, you have a two-year window, once you launch your community to actually become certified. So these are measurables that we would be held accountable and working towards achieving. And then it also, through the website, gives you a good sense of where these assessments are being conducted, it shows you the skill levels that the individuals have assessed at, so in Lucas County, for example, you see in these columns how many individuals have been certified at the bronze level, how many at the silver level, et cetera, et cetera, and that gives your community a good sense of the skill level of the workforce, or emerging workforce that have used this instrument to take the assessment, it also allows employers to see that. So if an employer might be, for example, looking at locating in a community through economic development efforts, they could see the skill levels of people that have come through our system to get a sense of what the skill level is out there, so there's a lot of value to moving forward with this. The state is also making strides towards putting this Work Keys instrument more into the Ohio Means Job System, and one of the recent changes that you're seeing here, I've produced a screen print from Ohio Means Jobs, and this is the site where job seekers are required to go and register, those that are on unemployment, but what the state has started doing is, in this position, for example, a stock lead that was found in Alariah, they're starting to use a profile database of job types that ACT has already worked with employers, and they're showing that if somebody is interested in applying for this stock lead position, the expectations would be that they would have these level of work scores, Work Key scores, so a 3 in applied mathematics, a 3 in reading for information, and a 4 in locating information. As we work with employers and job seekers have been assessed, if a job seeker hasn't attained those levels, our goal would be to work with them to help them achieve those levels, so again, we're making a more qualified referral for the type of jobs. And every job within the Ohio Means Job System has these categories, so as you go up into higher-level jobs, for example, engineering positions might have all sixes or sevens, so you get a real sense of what those jobs entail. And again, as I mentioned earlier, this is not new to us, so current utilization, right now, under House Bill 2, individuals who are in receipt of unemployment are required to take a practice Work Keys test that is built into the Ohio Means Job System. It's just a practice test, so they don't get a certificate from it, the scores don't go anywhere where anybody could see what the community's skill level is, but those individuals already take the practice assessment. The JVS and other career centers around the area, E. Hovey, Cuyahoga Valley Career Center, they use Work Keys as a means of showing what the basic skill level would be for somebody to get enrolled into one of their programs, so not necessarily what you would require at the end, but they've established bars to understand what the levels would be to get into the training. And then there's an initiative that's actually happening in Cuyahoga and Summit Counties right now, called Talent Neo, which is very much the same concept, but they receive funding through the Fund for Economic Future to provide a pilot program to begin doing the same thing, but they are actually not going through the ACT Work Ready Community model, they're just kind of doing it on their own. So they don't have the guidance that ACT is providing, they won't be on the map to show what their expectations are, so we'll be doing a similar thing here, which is good to be consistent in the region. And that's pretty much what I wanted to share today, so we're looking for the support of the board to be able to pursue becoming this Work Ready Academy, or Work Ready Community, and then also, it's part of the resolution to include the cost that we would need to begin using the tools that we would purchase on our own through ACT, to begin utilizing it through the Ohio Means Job System.
Commissioners, we've already sent employees to training on this, there's another session next week in Chattanooga.
Right.
So we've committed to this course of action, but we now need to formalize that process, and there's two more after Chattanooga, if I'm not mistaken, to get our employees certified in this system. We're asking you now to do this, so that we can make that turn and make, you know, the strong commitment from the county. Part of the problem, and I've talked extensively with Mike on this, is getting business to embrace how these skillsets relate to success from an applicant in their job. Lots of employers do on-the-job training, or they send their employees to training, they really grow their own a lot, but they're having a problem getting people evaluating those skillsets that are gonna make them successful in those training programs. So I think there's gonna have to be a big push in that, and we're gonna need to engage employers more fully. You were telling me about one company that was doing these assessments themselves, and having a struggle with the level of success of the applicant to even place high enough. We're talking about high school diploma folks that are not even placing at the third and fourth grade level, right?
Right, right, and this employer actually, the employer that we met at Manufacturing Day, that was having difficulty in obtaining qualified candidates, and they're not actually using Work Keys, but they're using a very similar instrument, and they're finding that many of the individuals applying for jobs with their company that really only require a high school diploma, or GED at this point, they're testing at very low education levels, fourth grade, third grade, and they don't have the time, as an employer, to be able to work with those people to bring their skill levels up. So those are the type of individuals that, again, coming through our system, if they're motivated and committed and working with us, we're providing the services to help them enhance those scores, so that they do become more prepared, and that employer doesn't have to worry about doing it higher up.
Yeah, this'll be a strong tool in retention and expansion, the, also, we'll have, we'll have community-wide data, if the attraction piece ever needs it, to look at the skillset of the workforce. We've heard these things thrown around before, you know, a ready workforce, a trained workforce. I'm not sure what that means, we're always following the dream, we, IT's a hot issue, so everybody floods in and takes, you know, computer classes or IT classes, well, that wanes, and then they flood, and they all become truck drivers, and they, we've seen this cycle in workforce development before. This is a little different, this is measuring core ability to do something, right, and whether you're gonna be successful at that, rather than identifying a targeted job that we think is gonna grow somewhere. You know, it's pretty, it's pretty exciting, and as Mike said, it's been happening out in the community, but you can no longer say that somebody has a high school diploma, so they should be reasonably successful at accomplishing this training, they're not, that's a bad measurement these days. It's also a measurement of aptitude, what they're, you know... Correct. Inherently better at.
inherently better at.
Right.
Yeah, and I know, you know, for example, in the Cincinnati area, and with the changes that have happened over the last year with GED, you know, the number of people that complete the GED testing and pass it, obtain their GED, has plummeted. And it's because of the changes that have been made to the way that they provide that testing. And in the Cincinnati area, their workforce system has been able to get employers to provide more or to have more value placed on this work keys assessment versus a high school diploma or GED. Because again, I don't necessarily need to show that I graduated from high school to possess the skills in the area of math, reading, and locating information that an employer's looking for. And that's part of what Talent Neo is trying to do, as well as to show by using an instrument like this, you could also have another means for the employer community to have other ways of measuring people's abilities to perform the work in a job.
You talked about the GED. You want to give the commissioners like three minutes on the ABLE program and what we do with that?
Yeah, so, I mean, ABLE program is one of the partners of Ohio Means Jobs. So, you know, their presence in the center, there's kind of serving twofold. One is they do provide the actual GED class, and there's individuals that are in the center coming, working towards achieving their GED. We're also trying, because with the change with the WEOAA law, we're trying to work more with ABLE because individuals that are in those classes that are 24 years old and younger meet the requirements for our out-of-school youth programming. So even though they're enrolled in GED, they're considered out-of-school. And our requirement through law right now is that we have to focus 75% of our youth dollars on that group. So we're trying to build better partnership with ABLE to educate those people that are trying to get into the GED program that are at that age level, the benefit of getting co-enrolled into the workforce system at the same time. This way, we could provide them with the supports, the supportive service, gas cards, bus tickets. We could also provide them with the one-on-one tutoring that would not necessarily be something that ABLE could provide, but that we have the funds and the services set up through WEOAA to be able to provide. We also, as I mentioned earlier, have the asset contract with them, which is where we have the literacy classes to allow people that, again, already have high school diploma, already have a GED, already have a college degree, that might need to remove some of the cobwebs to be able to perform at expected levels, to go into that class and have instruction that's not driven towards a GED-type curriculum. And our goal, again, is when folks as job seekers come through our system, if you have these deficiencies, we have to see that you're working to improve those deficiencies before we could feel confident referring you out to the employer community we're working with. If we're not confident, we have people that are going and the employers aren't satisfied with the referrals, the employers aren't going to have any value to what our system offers. So it's critical that we use these type of services. So we have great partnership with ABLE, and not as though we're not also trying to encourage the folks that are over 24 to enroll into the public workforce system. But our focus priority has been those that are 24 and younger, particularly with that group.
And we need that partnership because of the out-of-school youth component that changed. Remember, a year ago, we informed you that they kind of flipped it. We were, we had more emphasis on in-school youth, trying to target the at-risk student to continue their educational journey. And I think that was very worthy. I didn't think flipping it was the best way to use these dollars, but that's just the way it is. And so we had to reengage a whole population that we had very little engagement with because we had very little, we had smaller amounts of funds for, and this gave us an avenue to be able to target those folks. The other thing while you're here is, I want to talk about this, WEOAA Youth Extension Program. Six months that we can do the work?
Well, so...
I'm tasking you a little bit, Mike.
Yeah, that's all right. Boy, I didn't prepare for all this. No, I'm good. So we are just winding down the TANF Summer Employment Program that we operated on behalf of Job and Family Services. And through that effort, we were able to help 275 youth in the county become employed for the summer. And their stints lasted all different timeframes. Some lasted for less than a month, but there's many that have made it all the way through the summer, who are still working all the way through the end of this week. Those tend to be primarily the folks that are out of school. So what we are doing is, we're working with those individuals that while the TANF program is ending, and they had specific qualifications to get into that program, they, for the most part, meet the qualifications to be enrolled into the WEOAA program. So we're making this transition now of trying to take them, and with the TANF Summer Program, it was specifically an employment program. It wasn't to get them engaged in all different types of activities. It was make sure they're eligible, develop a work site, put them to work, pay them. By enrolling them now into our WEOAA program, it allows us to also now provide all of the other elements of the program that are out there for 24-year-olds and younger, including mentoring, tutoring, paid work experience, access to occupational skill training funds, and many other things. So we're trying to take this group that is still working and to transition them into our program, which helps us get more out-of-school youth into our services. And if we didn't get them enrolled, their employment would end, and not as though some of them haven't transitioned into permanent unsubsidized employment. But that number's relatively small because that wasn't the expectation of the program. So we're not just going to drop them off, we're trying to continue to work with them through the year-round program. And the Comprehensive Case Management and Employment Program that we've talked about in the past as well, this is one of the state initiatives where they're combining workforce dollars as well as TANF dollars with the intention of having a year-round program for one agency to work with youth in the community. It's sort of that concept of year-round doing what I'm describing right now that we're trying to do with this transition from one program to the next. So that's coming right around the corner, and while this is the last year of having a summer employment program because of this change with the Comprehensive Case Management and Employment Program, next year, as we work with these funds that are going to be in the community, we have to figure out how to make this work year-round.
Well, you know, the realization with some of these changes, again, I don't think all of them, I don't like all of them, but some of them make some real sense. And one of those is that we had multiple agencies doing similar, similar work. And the ability to create a seamless process where we could deliver services more fully, as Mike said, on a year-round basis, rather than a piece here, a piece there, and then keep moving them back and forth. We'll be struggling next year, early next year, because this board has to make the designation on where that program is going to be operating out of. And we're working on some things right now to, you know, get a clear line of sight to what the best recommendation to the board's going to be. But it's pretty exciting, and that we're able to put some of these people into work experiences. And we're concentrating on those that have the greatest opportunity for success. Like I talked about this extensively, the folks that are going to get continued employment opportunities are going to be the ones that are moving along a continuum that demonstrates a sincere commitment to get an education, get job skills, rather than just sit around and say, "Well, I'm in this program because I get paid to go to this little job here, and when it's done, I'm done." They've got to be evolving.
Right.
So Mike, is this the old program with the 32-hour work week, eight hours of training, soft skills, educational component, is it going to be similar to that?
So, you know, right now, our workforce system, we're utilizing a similar flow to what you just described.
Right.
And we're looking at recognizing, we deal with a very diverse set of job seekers. We have those that have all kinds of barriers, limited work experience, job hoppers, you know, ex-offenders that have no work experience, but are just coming back to community. We also have folks from Lorraine National Bank who have worked for 20 years in a system that all of a sudden find themselves laid off. And we've put together a flow where through our intake process, we're looking at the person's work experience, education levels, et cetera. And we're determining what the best course of action regarding our flow that would be suitable for that individual. And right now, we've actually have a two-week workshop. The first week is all dedicated towards soft skills. So the job hopper, a person with barriers, it's expected they're going to go through that one week in order to then get to the second week where we're blending in the folks that don't appear to need soft skills. And the second week is job readiness-type activities, but it's also sort of our way of developing a cohort of individuals now who have these different skill sets to begin bonding with our system. It's not just process them and put them out, it's really building a relationship because we have to get these job seekers to value what we're offering them. The second week is also where, right now, we have the literacy assessment built in. So it's so that everybody's getting the literacy assessment, and while we don't utilize work keys right now, we're using the Test of Adult Basic Education, which is the instrument that ABLE uses. And again, the outcomes from that tend to be more of these grade levels that, you know, somebody has a 9.2 grade level, what does that mean? So this is where we're looking at incorporating the work keys into that second week so that everybody transitioning through our system is getting that assessment. It's expected that the folks in the first week that need that soft skills, that they're going to participate, and they're going to meet our expectations of how we expect them to dress. And, you know, we're not expecting people to come with suits and shirts and ties, but this is something that's trying to better prepare them towards employment. If you can't come to the center looking halfway decent, I mean, you never know if we're going to have an employer on-site doing a recruitment, that the first impression's the last impression. We try to stress that, like, the importance of meeting the expectations, and these aren't hard to achieve. And it's really, again, showing some type of effort. If somebody has a need for clothing and they can't dress the way we would expect, we could help them. You have to show that initiative. So we built those workshops in to be able to better screen people, also with the intention that, you know, you're learning some of the stuff along the way that we're expecting you to learn. It's helping to show your commitment, motivation to the system, but it's also starting to build those relationships. So part of that workshop is built into that, what you've described.
All right, thank you.
I was just going to say, often we hear the public criticism of, "Well, there's no jobs in Lorraine County, and there are no jobs in Ohio, and I'm just going to have to move away from here, or my kids can't stay in Ohio or come back from college and work." It is true that there's tens of thousands of jobs in Ohio every day that go unfilled because of this skills gap issue. And we're not talking about jobs that always require a college education.
Correct.
And that's where that, you know, the skills gap comes into play there, but, you know, also with the readiness skills, if you need to work in some type of skilled labor-type operation. But, so I just want to stress that the jobs are there, it's a matter of being up to speed on the skills. Something that's not talked about much in Ohio, but we talked about in Columbus, was a great concern that we were finding out in testing high school students before they were going into their first year of college, having challenges with math. You know, so just because you attain a high school diploma doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to be strong in math, strong in reading comprehension. And a lot of the colleges are working extensively on trying to figure out where this, where this gap is because they're coming out of high school, but yet the math skills still aren't quite where the colleges feel they need to be for college math. So there's a lot of remedial math taking place. And I guess I would just say to individuals, you know, don't be embarrassed. I mean, if you have challenges with math, there's nothing wrong with that. If you have challenges with reading comprehension, there's nothing wrong with that. But there are ways to help improve, you know, in those areas, and there are programs available. And we all have our strengths and weaknesses. You know, when I was in school, I avoided every science class I could possibly avoid, and my counselors kept telling me, "You've got to take more than all these English classes." And I think the only one I didn't take was British literature, I just couldn't digest British literature. But tried to avoid science classes at, you know, every turn possible. Everybody's got their areas of interest, you know, skills, and, you know, God blesses us in different ways with areas that we excel in. But there's nothing to be embarrassed about if your math skills aren't that strong, if your comprehension skills aren't that strong. But there are ways to improve so that you can get into the workforce. The other component we always have to talk about is, another example, the importance of transit. You know, we need to be able to get people to work. You know, the studies are showing it probably costs about $8,500 a year to keep a car. You stop and think about your car payments, your gas payments, insurance, you know, and probably to get anywhere near supporting a car, you probably need to be making more than $15 an hour, I think, probably, to even make that possible. But, so there's a lot, lots of components here to getting people back to work. I would only suggest that, I think that, you know, sometimes the horse doesn't always come to water. Sometimes we need to maybe look at trying to get out into the community as much as possible and actually taking the programs, you know, to the people. And, you know, whatever we're doing in that area, I think we should be expanding upon because I'm amazed by how many people I talk to who I tell them about our programming, and for some reason, they don't, they don't want to go over there, or they're concerned about going over there. And I just keep wondering if maybe we shouldn't do more, you know, community outreach.
Right, well, and it's interesting that you mention that, and I know that, you know, through United Way and all the collaborative focus that they have in place right now, we have been working much more with many of the agencies around the community. And, for example, we have a very good relationship right now with Oberlin Community Services, you know, an agency where they have very much respect from the people that utilize their services. And we find that if we could, I mean, we don't have the staff to be able to send our staff to Oberlin Community Services to provide what I described we're doing at the main facility, but we have the resources to be able to educate that community provider how to do something very similar to what we do. And, you know, it's not as though people have gone to school, per se, to become workforce development specialists or relationship builders, because that's really what the system is. If we can get a community services center to learn how to work with people, and again, to meet what our expectations would be of making sure somebody is appropriate to be referred to an employer, there is no challenge, really, to doing that other than building relationships. And we're doing similar type work. I know Elyria Public Library, we're right now planning in sometime in November to actually conduct our orientation at the library so that people, maybe that do go to the library, that, again, don't have familiarity or aren't able to get to our center, they could hear the information right there in the library. And while we will dedicate the resources to go to get it started and to see if there's a demand, eventually, the library is interested in dedicating staff to learn how to present what we present. And the presentation of learning what the system about, again, it's not as though somebody formally went to be trained how to do that, it's selling our system, it's selling the value of connecting to the public workforce system. We are a crutch along the way. We are a system that has relationships with employers where you might not see job postings in a newspaper that has very limited job postings, or you might not see postings online. But our relationship with employers helps us to open doors that might not have been able to be opened before. And that's what we're trying to do. So we are trying to build relationships. Are we in every community? Have we expanded to, you know, do this beyond that? I know, but I think we'll get a good sense of how it's going to work with what we're trying right now, and from those practices, we'll be able to expand.
You know, Commissioner, you hit on something that's really, really significantly important. You would not believe the very high percentage of first-year college students that aren't taking college classes, they're taking remediation. They're graduating, they got a diploma, and they want to move on, only to find out that they're not college-ready. And that drives up their cost, it drives up, it prolongs the amount of time they're going to be in the system because they're being remediated. And it's a crisis that they're leaving some of these, these schools, these school districts. They're not only unprepared for work, they're unprepared for continued education. And sometimes, I don't think that that's being appropriately addressed because people are worried about graduation rates, they're worried about attainment. But somewhere in the graduation rate and the attainment and the schools, the districts, there's got to be a follow-up to find out that we're graduating people that are ready. And rather than just moving them like cattle through a chute to the end of the lines so we can count, get a head count. It's terrifying, the amount of remediation that's going on. And that's got to end, and that problem's got to be addressed somehow, somewhere. I told you I had 15 minutes.
I'm saying, much more than I expected to share today, but I'm always happy to do so. So thanks for having me.
You can see, though, when you're out in the community, please, a lot of times, businesses, we try to reach out to them, they, they're reluctant to come in, as well as the employees are reluctant to come in and look at what services can be provided. Our calling card is all of us out in the community to, you know, to share the work that's going on over there.
Did I make a motion to approve? Okay. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lindy.
Aye.
Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
Mr. Portas.
I think I've had more than enough to say this morning already, I yield.
Ms. Renus.
Commissioners, I do have, it looks like, three matters of pending litigation to review with you updates on.
Commissioners, Commissioners, report. Monday, I attended my Goodwill Board Meeting, and I want to thank you guys again for supporting the fundraiser that we had a little while back. And I just want to remind everybody, when they have donated goods that they want to give, to make sure you give them to an agency like Goodwill or Salvation Army, one of those that we know gives back to our community. There's a lot of boxes out there that we have no idea where those donations go and who's reaping the benefits from those boxes, so keep that in mind. Tuesday, we had our Stormwater Meeting and an IAC Meeting. It's been a busy week, been a long meeting already, so I'll yield to fellow commissioners.
Extremely busy week. Congratulations, Boys and Girls Club, attended an open house. They had West U Terrace, got to speak with the lady who ran, I guess we considered the teacher, and the students are doing a really nice job. Congratulations, attended a fundraiser for the Loco Yaks, the group who really has spent a lot of time doing the Black River cleanup. They had a really nice turnout. Congratulations to Tom Stubber once again, attended La Cotta's Annual Dinner. Dan Fike, former Cleveland Brown, is the honorary chairman this year. They had a great turnout. Commissioner Lundey was there also. Just a very busy weekend. Carlisle Fire, Clearview, the Palace Civic Center, though, I got invited as a former board member. They didn't update on what's happening at the Palace. They've regenerated with the new boards, we're looking forward to, a lot of exciting things coming out there, trying to make the place fun, as Danny Matelski said, so he's on the board.
It's a beautiful place.
What is that? Okay, oh, Solid Waste Management, okay, all right, then, thank you, I'll get there next, well, shortly. Had an opportunity, I got to sling spaghetti on Sunday, they were shorthanded, Sherrod Brown, so I spent three and a half hours slinging.
I cooked there many a year, how was it?
Absolutely wonderful. Me, Glenn Loggery, Todd Setti, John Gargis, Sherry Campbell from the libraries, and Beth Tames. Beth and I slung spaghetti.
Are we allowed back to cook again? You know, we got thrown out of there for a little while.
Yeah, no, they need help, but, yeah, they're doing all right job there. Again, as Commissioner Kowski said, Stormwater District Meeting went well, all our projects are going forward, approved the budget for next year. Investment Advisory Committee, we're holding pace, a little bit more interest, but nothing exciting on the revenue side, even though we could use the money. Had an opportunity last night, I wasn't on the panel this time, but the legal women voters of Oberlin at Craig Hall at Oberlin College had another panel discussion in regards to yes, voting on issue two and three. I did, from the government perspective, get to make my comments as questions came up. Very good turnout. They took me off the panel this time because I wanted to bring in another person who had constitutional law experience where I didn't in the past, because there was, in our first one, Professor Emeritus Steinglass from Cleveland State only had the one side of no. They brought in a gentleman named Greg Colridge, who was with the American Friends Service Committee. And issue two has a lot of, it's a six-paragraph constitutional amendment that is open for interpretation. It was meant just to, as a heat-seeking missile, to take out issue three, but it has longstanding, far-reaching implications when it comes to other citizens' initiative, whether it's working with, actually, right off the bat, it puts together a ballot board that's a monopoly deciding whether or not your initiative can go on there or not. But, I mean, it would possibly, based on legal interpretation, stop issues that would be considered a special interest, like when we had issue two a couple of years ago overturning Senate Bill Five, a special interest, or someone who would benefit would be just labor to collective bargain, so to get possibly put it that it wouldn't be just an issue unto itself. I've left some copies back there on his opinion of this, and whether you like issue three or not, issue two is just really bad policy. You know, it's, his last statement on this, "Issue two is part of a current broad trend at every level of government by the power elite to strip authority and rights from people, from local efforts to eliminate home rule to international efforts, efforts like the Trans-Pacific Partnerships, investor-state dispute settlement process permitting corporations to directly challenge sovereign governments before unelected, unaccountable tribunals." I mean, this, it's just one of those pieces that were put together quickly, there was not a lot of public discussion on it. Please vote yes on issue one, though, that is the bipartisan support to work with redistricting and all that, Commissioner Lundey, because he came out of the state legislature. That is being supported by Republican Party, Democrat Party, Chamber of Commerce, everybody is supporting this to give us a better look at how we have representation throughout the state. We also have, from the Ohio EPA, a review of comments from our Solid Waste Management District, our district report. I've served 10 of my 11 years as a representative from the Board of Commissioners. We've just approved the third plan that I've been with, and we've done a lot of good things improving Lorraine County. When I first got in office, we were less than 10%. We're now in the mid-40s in regards to recycling as community-wide. Comments from the EPA review process through 2014. "We cited Lorraine County as a top-tier district in many ways, from your partnership with your sheriff, where we're using the environmental officers to track people who are dumping tires as one major issue, and other misuse of waste, to our involvement in our communities through our community grants via collection events, like our shred days and our farm tire days. The district has a lot to be proud of, and I appreciate your willingness to share your experiences with other solid waste management districts. I value the strong, positive relationship that exists with you and other district staff and look forward to continuing that in future years." Christopher Germain, Planner, Ohio EPA, who handles our district. So, again, a shout-out to everybody who served on the Policy Committee. It'll be a major change next year, as I announced, Brian Parsons is stepping down as our longtime chair, so we hope to get a very community-minded person to serve in that capacity. But I think that's the end of my report. It's been a really busy week. Commissioner Lundey?
Sure. Yeah, would certainly encourage voters to support issue one, the way that's structured is, that if two members of the minority don't go along with a redistricting plan, then that means that instead of the plan being in place for 10 years, it'd be in place for four years so that they can revisit it again. The reality is that, you know, Ohio's a pretty evenly divided state between the two parties. However, based upon redistricting, you have a breakdown, and these are just the facts, 63 Republican members in the House to 36 Democrat members in the House, 23 Republican members in the Senate to 10 Democrats. So, you know, obviously, that's not a true representation of what our county, or our state looks like and how our state normally votes. It's pretty much 50-50 state, but because of redistricting, and quite frankly, whether it's a D or an R party that's at the table drawing those lines, it's always been drawn to that party's advantage. But we need more competitive districts. When you end up with more competitive districts, you avoid extremism, which I think we see a lot in politics and government nowadays. Somebody's trying to get more to the right of the person on the right, somebody's trying to get more to the person on the left, and nobody's ever meeting in the middle, and that's where a lot of decisions are made. So certainly, I would encourage support for issue one. Issue two certainly, I think, is an overreach, and, you know, I think the public should have access to put initiatives before the voters of Ohio to vote. And as the Commissioner pointed out, it certainly was done at the last minute, was raced through. I've seen things raced through in Columbus like that before, but to me, issue two looks like too much of a power grab that could make it difficult for the public to have a voice with statewide initiatives. So, yeah, that should be a no on that one as well, or a no on two. As far as the agenda for the week, had a chance to attend the 4-H Volunteer Recognition Dinner at the fair. That was for all the volunteers and all the 4-H members who worked on that, and as I've always said, we have one of the most successful county fairs around, and congratulations to the board on another successful year, and certainly to all the 4-H members, 4-H volunteers. You know, it's a good opportunity for education on agriculture, and it's a good family event. The Lorraine County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Services Dinner, Ted was probably getting tired of seeing me, he saw me at so many events, he thought he got rid of me at work. But Tom Stubber, the whole group, doing an amazing job. As we all know, the drug issue is a very, very serious problem in our county and throughout our state, and once a year, La Cotta and organizations like them would have an event in Columbus, they'd call it the Faces of Addiction, where they would have about 15 or 20 people who would just, each one at a time, step up to the microphone and just briefly give about a one-minute story of how they turned their lives around. And you're talking about people who were living in cars, living out on the streets, basically had destroyed their families and their family life, and these are individuals that now their families are back together. A lot of them have gone back to complete their high school diploma, and some have a college education, they own homes, they own cars, they have jobs. So, you know, it is possible, but we need to continue to dedicate the resources, especially from Columbus, to help those who face addiction issues. So congratulations to La Cotta for the amazing work that they do. Had a chance to go to the spaghetti dinner as well in Carlisle for the Carlisle Township Firefighters Association, and had a chance to personally witness Commissioner Kalo slinging spaghetti at Senator Sherrod Brown's event, and that was very well-attended. Also, have had the opportunity to meet up with some of the mayors of our lakefront communities. We continue to look at an initiative there, and the Stormwater Management Meeting, I thought was very productive as we continue to deal with stormwater issues on days like today.
Board Correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion? Moskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
Public Comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board this morning, come on up. No, David? Seeing none, I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the Administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Moskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
Public Comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board this morning, come on up. No, David? Seeing none, I move that we go into Executive Session as outlined by the Administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Moskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
Public Comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board this morning, come on up. No, David? Seeing none, I move that we go into Executive Session as outlined by the Administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Moskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
Public Comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board this morning, come on up. No, David? Seeing none, I move that we go into Executive Session as outlined by the Administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Moskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
Public Comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board this morning, come on up.